Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. This is the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We will start with a roll call. Matthew Banda?
Here.
Robert Canto?
Here.
Roja Afshar?
Present.
David St. Germain?
Here.
On note for the record, regular member Liz Sanford is absent. Our alternate is Bruce Polsky.
Here.
And on note for the record, our other alternate, Mike Tucci, is absent. Mr. Chair of the Lords.
Do I need to roll call?
Huh?
I don't get a roll call?
I'm sorry.
I don't know if we need it for the record or not. I was like, how do, it's not all about me, but I wanted to make sure we, if we needed it in the record.
Scott Halstead?
It's a dig up. Here.
Are you sure?
Yes. Well, no, now I'm not, so.
All right.
Thanks, Shannon.
There we go.
Appreciate it. All right, that'll probably come back to bite me, but let's, um. So we've got a little bit of administration to take care of before we read the legal notice and such. So, um, Matt, you're okay filling in for Liz's secretary? And Bruce, are you okay filling in as a voting member for Liz at this meeting? Great. All right. Matt, take it away with the legal notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Hartford Camp Current application for special permit for charitable and philanthropic institution use, excuse me, for hosting events located at 96 Patterson Park Road, AKA 8017 Patterson Park Road, R40 Zone. Town Plan and Zoning Commission application for text amendments to the zoning regulations, Article 2, Section 14, C1 Zone, to permit mobile food vendors. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person at One Munti Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. A copy of the proposal is online or by calling the Plow, the Planning Department for Farmington Zoning, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the 7th day of February, 2025.
Thanks very much, Matt. Appreciate it. And so officially welcome everybody to the, I don't even know what date it is, February 24th, 2025, Plans and Plan Zoning Commission meeting. We've got a few new business items and a couple, uh, public hearings. So let's jump right into the new business. Item number one, Reverend Matthew Guarick. Application to replace sign and install black aluminum fence on retaining wall at St. Patrick's Church.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, to the commission. Uh, I am Father Matthew Guarick. I am the pastor of Our Lady of Knock Parish, which now consists of St. Patrick Church in Farmington and St. Mary's Star of the Sea Church in Unionville. I live at 100 Main Street in Farmington. And this first application is to replace the sign of the church and to install a black aluminum fence on the retaining wall at St. Patrick's Church. And so, so basically, we, because like I just said, we went from two completely separate Catholic churches to a newly combined parish for, um, different administrative and church reasons. We formally merged together into one new parish with both churches still open and intact. But now with that, uh, new name and that new reality, we were hoping and applying to replace the sign in front of each of the churches. Um, and so at St. Patrick Church, we attempted to make, as it's explained in Shannon's memo, a like-for-like sign that is, uh, very similar, almost identical, uh, in size and shape and style. It has and includes the new name, Our Lady of Knock Parish, but also St. Patrick Church. And, uh, like I said, is very, very similar to, to the old sign, but we tried to keep it as, as close as we could. And so that's the first piece of the application. And then the second piece is a, a black aluminum fence, um, around the new, uh, I guess, a few years old now, but HVAC equipment, um, that is right at the corner of Main Street and Maple. Basically, when the church was being renovated, uh, the new addition was putting on, being put on, some new HVAC equipment was put, placed there. And there was a new retaining wall, um, that has a fairly substantial drop off, uh, right, right off of it. And we'd like to put a fence around that corner, um, to be able to, to add to the safety of that area, to make sure that anybody coming down, um, that corner and coming back down to the parking lot or coming down that street wouldn't accidentally, um, make their way down that steep, uh, steep drop.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's turn it to the, over to the commissioners for questions. Matt, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bob? No. Hate to see the, uh, the name go. I'm glad you put it down at the bottom. It's where I got married, so.
Sure, absolutely. And that's, you know, one of the concerns from many, many of our parishioners, um, is that very thing. And what we like to, to make sure that people know is that, uh, it is a new parish, kind of a new umbrella name, but it's still, absolutely still St. Patrick Church or St. Mary's Church. And so we're, we're still going to hold on to those names and that history for sure.
Awesome. Yeah. All set. Thanks, Bob.
Uh, no questions. Thanks, uh, thanks for being here.
You're welcome. Hey, man.
No questions. Good idea with the fence, though.
No questions here either. Right. And I don't either. Think it looks great. So thank you for sharing that with us. Can we get a motion in a second?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application to replace the sign and install black aluminum fence on the retaining wall at St. Patrick's Church located at 110 Main Street.
Second. Everybody ready to vote? Comfortable with what we're voting on? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you. And then the next one as well for a, uh, sign application at St. Mary's Church at 145 Main.
So basically, this is a, uh, we'll call it a corollary of the last application, um, for the matching sign, uh, at St. Mary's Star of the Sea Church. The, the only real differences would be the coloration on the sign, uh, which we made in a more gray and white kind of style to match the, the colors of that church as opposed to the stones at St. Patrick. And in addition to that, it's a little bit smaller, um, to, to meet the six-foot requirement. Uh, the one at St. Patrick's is a little taller, um, because that's, you know, the sign that they have now. But this one, we, we just shrunk down just a little bit to make sure it didn't go over six feet. It's going to be placed in the spot where the current stone sign is that says St. Mary's Church. There's already lighting there that's in place for that. And so we're not going to be replacing or changing any of that. There's going to be stonework underneath that's already in place. So everything is basically staying the same. We're just going to be pulling out the old one, putting in this one right in that same spot.
Great. Thank you again. Matt?
No questions.
We'll go through quickly. Just make sure there's no questions.
Yeah.
Bob?
No.
Rojas?
No questions.
No. No questions.
Okay. I think, I think it's a pretty easy one. Let's get a motion in a second again, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application to replace sign at St. Mary's Church located at 145 Main Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it.
All right. Item number three, the ADRC, um, reappointments. Is that you, Shannon?
Uh, yes. So we have two, uh, the, our Architectural Design Review Committee provides advisor, advisory, um, capacity to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for reviewing projects within our two center districts and the midpoint development district to a limited extent. The members rotate off on a, on a rotating basis. This year, there are two members, uh, that are up for renewal, both David Quisenberry and Miles Brown. Sandy got in touch with both gentlemen. Both are interested in being reappointed to the commission. Both, um, have provided valuable insight into the applications that they've, um, that have been before them. So, um, I've seen no reason to not renew their, um, their membership on the ADRC. Like I said, they've both expressed interest in, in continuing with ADRC.
Anybody have any questions for Shannon? Great guys. Go ahead. Pretty straightforward. Okay. Get a motion in a second, please.
Can the motion be?
Yeah, you can do both of them at the same time.
Like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint David Quisenberry and Miles Brown for a three-year term on the Architectural Design Review Committee.
Second. Everybody comfortable voting? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
How do you say his name?
Mm-hmm. All right. We have a couple of applications to accept. First one for Ashley Chapman.
Like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit by Ashley Chapman for home business cottage food bakery at 46 Hillside Avenue and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of March 24th, 2025.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And Town of Farmington?
Like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit by the Town of Farmington per Article 2, Section 1B10 Municipal Land Use for the process of raw wood for municipal purposes such as fence posts at rails, benches, et cetera, at 8750 Roma Drive, R30C Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of March 24th, 2025.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Matt, for the motions. All right. As we get into our two public hearings, just a few, um, sort of comments to make before we jump in. So the process for these, for anybody in the room or on the, on the phone, um, on the virtual meeting, the app, uh, just like you've seen, the applicant will present to the commission. We'll have an opportunity as a commission to ask questions. Well, then it'll open it up for public comment first to people in the room and then to folks that are joining us virtually. We value the public comment greatly. Um, it's very important to us. At the same time, for the sake of everybody's, you know, consideration of everybody's time, we just ask that folks try to keep comments to five minutes or less. And it's okay to say ditto if somebody said something that you agree with. So just, we're doing, we're not going to start a clock up here or anything. We just want to set some, some guidelines to move the meeting along. So, um, with that being said, we will start with Hartford's Camp Current. Camp Current.
Good evening. Uh, Ryan Hoiler from Robinson &amp; Cole on behalf of Camp Current. Thank you for taking the time tonight to, to look at our special permit application. What we're here for, uh, is a special permit application specifically to, as a charitable organization within the R40 Zone to hold and host private events at Camp Current, to be able to help continue funding the Camp Current operation as a day camp, both during the summer as well as during the spring break, uh, during the year. So, uh, sorry, can I move?
Nope. I got it. So just let me know when you're ready to have.
You could go to the next one. Thank you. So again, what we're looking to do is, um, raise funds to continue the operation of the camp. We're talking about private events, anything from corporate events where there's 10 to 20 to 40 people in an inside meeting room to, uh, birthday parties or fundraisers that might be the same thing, to a, a smaller number of larger events, um, that utilize more of the campgrounds. As you may know, Camp Current has been there for a long time. I believe it's been in the same location since 1963. It has, is the oldest and largest free summer daycare camp in the country. And I want to emphasize that free. This is a camp that takes children from urban environments, buses them in for free to the camp, provides them breakfast and lunch and educational and recreational opportunities for approximately seven, eight weeks during the summer and then another week during, uh, during the spring break. It is entirely free. The, the campers are not charged at all. And there, there is a cost associated with that. But nonetheless, you know, since 1894, um, uh, Camp Current has hosted over 500,000 campers. And it's something that they really want to continue. You know, this is a camp that hosts over 750 children in any given summer, um, from approximately 8:30 in the morning until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And again, it, it, it provides, make sure that they have healthy food with breakfast and lunch. Make sure that they have continued educational and recreational opportunities to be able to play outside, um, use the basketball courts, the pools in the beautiful environment that is that property off of Patterson Park Road and is directly across the street from Patterson Park itself. Since, if you can move to the next one. So, since the pandemic, since the COVID-19 pandemic, obtaining funding for the camp has become more and more difficult. And one of the things that the camp has looked at is the ability to use this huge infrastructure that it has over there to raise funds for the camp during the year when it's not in operation as a summer camp. Some of you may be aware of Buddy Bash, which is kind of the annual get-together that, um, that Camp Current hosts. That is what we're talking about on the very largest end of the events. You know, we're, we're talking about, um, you know, having between, oh, around a, a decent number of smaller events throughout the year. Our application specifically listed up to 100 events of 10 to 40 people a year, primarily indoors, using the space that they already have for business meetings, corporate meetings, things like that, smaller birthday parties maybe, and then smaller, uh, other events. So up to 25 small outdoor events where you're talking 25 to 50 people, maybe utilizing the basketball courts or the swimming pools, weather provided, not this winter, obviously. And, uh, another couple, maybe 10 outdoor large events of maybe up to 100 people in kind of the outdoor amphitheater area. And then six of the largest events that we're talking about, the Buddy Bash type events where there's 100 or more people there. You can see on the slide, the site overview. When you first come in, you come in off the loop off of Patterson Park Road. You follow that loop up to the island. And then along that island, there's kind of a split between three pavilions. There's two pavilions toward the south and then one pavilion, I mean, kind of up toward the north. That northern pavilion is where most of the outdoor activity, uh, would happen. If you were going to have a DJ or something like they have at Buddy Bash, it would be within that northern pavilion, which is the most insulated within the site, the farthest within the site. We would obviously abide by any town noise ordinances, uh, any town operational hours that are required for this site. We're proposing that nothing go past 10:00 PM. We think this is a good site for this for a number of reasons. First, it is largely wooded to the north. So while there are residential properties to the north of this site, there is a huge wooded area between those residential properties and, um, and Camp Current itself. During the winter months, a lot of those trees, the foliage does fall off. But when we're talking outdoor activities, we're not really talking outdoor activities in the winter months. It's too cold to really have a ton of outdoor activities. There might be one or two related to the cold weather. We're not talking late night outdoor parties in the middle of the wintertime. To the extent that any of that late night stuff up till 10:00 PM may be happening in the small number of events that we've asked for outside, it is going to be in a time of year where there's a lot of foliage on those trees and that's there to help protect both the sound and the light from escaping the site and getting to those properties to the north. We are aware of the development to the south of the property. I actually was one of the attorneys that, uh, submitted the application for that development at my old firm, uh, and sat with the Economic Development Council for that, for that development and everything. We've submitted as part of the slide deck here, the planting plan for that application. There will be a row of trees planted along that side of the property, between where Camp Current would be and where the new building would be. And in addition, because any of those real, like, if there's going to be a noise associated with an outdoor activity, it's going to be happening within that center pavilion. And that center pavilion is again separated by even more trees to, to the, um, I guess that would be to the west of it, um, between that and the building. So while there is kind of a line of trees that's been cleared, if you go up, uh, follow Wolf Pit Road as if it went straight, some of that, uh, foliage has been cleared. It, it will be put back in. There will be a line of trees replanted as part of the planting plan. And additionally, there's that separation and further trees and foliage between the center pavilion and, and where that south property would be. We obviously want to work with the neighbors. If the neighbors have comments or concerns about light or traffic or noise, it's something that we'd absolutely be willing to work with. This is a site that has sufficient parking for at least 150 vehicles. If you've been there for Buddy Bash, it gets a little crazy with all the cars coming in and out as far as like, uh, ride shares, but there's always plenty of parking. And we provided as part of our application a parking map showing where there's really three primary areas of parking. You go in, the blue shows the traffic flow, the red shows the parking areas. You can park along the southern portion of, uh, the road there when you come in, that's section B. You can park on the island itself as section A. And then there is an accessible, uh, route to get to the basketball courts at section C. So there's plenty of parking for the larger type events that we're working, talking about. And to the extent that we expected more people than that, um, you know, we would work with, uh, ride shares or whatever we needed to work with to, to coordinate how that would, how that would work. You know, Patterson Park Road is a, uh, it, right now, it's, it's, it's fairly undeveloped in the sense that toward the one side of the road is Patterson Park and the, the pond itself. Toward the other side of the road is, you have the new development to the south along with some commercial buildings there. There are residences up to the north, but generally speaking, there's not traffic problems with respect to how many cars are coming and going. We're talking about most of the events we're asking for happening during the day. So there would be, you know, there's not, uh, sightline or darkness concerns about cars coming or going. The handful of events we're talking about having at night, um, are going to be really well, really well coordinated. And in the times when I've been there for Buddy Bash, for example, they've had good signage along Patterson Park Road to point people in the direction of where to go and where to park. I'm going to go through the criteria for a special permit real quick, um, just because we do think that it really fits this area. The first is that the existing and future character of the neighborhood, uh, in which the, the use is, will be protected. We're not talking about any changes to the property here. There'll be no infrastructure changes. We're just going to be utilizing the property and the infrastructure that's already there to help continue funding for really this amazing camp system that we have. And it does fit within both the charitable organizations as well as the clubs and fraternal organizations aspect of the special use permits under, uh, the A40 Zone. It is for charitable use in the sense that all of the fundraising will be going toward Camp Current. And additionally, the R40 Zone by special permit permits clubs and organizations whose primary business is renting out their space. And that's what we'll be talking about here. However, in this case, the primary business would still be Camp Current itself. And what we're trying to do is continue funding for that camp. Additionally, there's adequate safeguards to protect adjacent properties. We've talked about the significant wooded buffer and foliage buffer between this and the sites to the north, how outdoor activities would primarily be taking place during that time of year where that foliage is thick and able to help insulate the site. And there will be a line of planted trees and further insulation from that newly developed property to the south. Traffic circulation within the site and the amount, uh, location and access to parking is adequate. And there's adequate site distance. We've just talked about that. There's more than adequate parking at this site. I've been there for Buddy Bash more than once. There's always places to park. And again, it's really well coordinated on the outside. You can see where you're going and they put signs up when there are events to show people where to go and where to park. The road network, including the intersections, are capable of satisfactorily handing, handling the traffic. Every morning in the summer, they have buses come in and drop these kids off and buses leave in the afternoon and that goes off without a hitch. This is a relatively untrafficked area. It's, it doesn't have a lot of backup or congestion or anything. And there's more than adequate room for both parking and for turning and, and traffic on the road itself. And then finally, or sorry, not finally, the basic design of the proposed uses of buildings. The relationship between the buildings and the land and the overall physical appearance will be in general harmony. Again, we're not asking for any changes to the physical buildings. We're just asking to utilize what's already there. And then finally, um, to the extent that it increase, proposes increasing building density, the topography and the natural features are capable of accommodating. Again, not asking to increase anything, just asking for maybe an increase in use. And there is plenty of room, um, both for parking and traffic and circulation for anyone coming and going from this site. We also believe, um, and there will be also public services. To the extent that there are any public service issues, there are public services available to suit the site as necessary. And then finally, we also believe that it fits with the POCD, uh, the Town's Plan of Conservation and Development. Within the Patterson Park neighborhood, it's another use for the property across the street from Patterson Park. It's my understanding that the campers utilize Patterson Park as part of their, uh, as part of their camp experience. And hopefully that will become more available to them as we've gone through this Patterson Park study and are trying to reinvigorate the park. And, um, again, anything that offers those campers an opportunity to continue utilizing this camp by raising funds during the year, um, that's what we're here for and that's what we're trying to make happen here. So I have available with me, um, Corianne and Tricia, both from Camp Current, uh, available to answer any questions you may have. And at this point, um, we'll hand it over to you and, and to the public.
Great. Appreciate the presentation. Thanks so much. Let me go to the commissioners for questions. Matt, we'll start with you.
Sure. Um, just thinking about similar applications in the past. Buddy Bash, what's, what's the traffic like, uh, during the Buddy Bash? It sounds like that's the preeminent event, the biggest event you have. So what's, I guess, what's the normal traffic like?
Honestly, until you get off of Patterson Park Road and turn into Wolf Pit Road, I don't even think you would know that there was anything going on. You know, the, the times that I've been to Buddy Bash, um, the first time was in the rain. And my idea was, well, I'm just going to follow the cars in front of me to get to Buddy Bash. There weren't any cars in front of me. I had no idea where I was going until I saw the signs and the signs told me where to go. So you really don't get a ton of traffic on Patterson Park Road itself. Within that little circle, it can get a little crazy at times during Buddy Bash with people picking and dropping off in ride shares. But part of what we're talking about here is, as we do this more often, having a better organization about that and coordinating those ride shares ahead of time. But even in those situations, it's, it's, it's not overwhelming at all. And there's always places to park. You can always move. Even during the, the peak pickup and drop off times of Buddy Bash, you can always get around that circle and leave or enter if you want to.
Good. Thank you. Shannon, has there been any noise complaints from that timeframe with Buddy Bash that's going on?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Those, those are the big two we continually see with these events. Any, so your special events have over 100 people. Is there, obviously Buddy Bash is the biggest one. How many, how many people attend that?
About 500 people.
Five hundred.
Buddy Bash. So that's by far the largest event that we're talking about. And, you know, most of the events we're talking about are an order of magnitude smaller than that.
Sure.
And, and generally, again, would happen during the day and not at night.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Um, excuse me. Well, great presentation. Couple of things I just have to piggyback on what Matt said. So you have written down, um, roughly 100 events?
Correct.
That's two per week.
Give or take. Uh, when, especially most of those, the vast majority of those would be smaller events during the day indoors.
Like what are we targeting?
Birthday parties, uh, especially during the winter months would be indoors. A lot of kind of corporate retreats and corporate meetings, board meetings, things like that. They have nice facilities in there. They have a commercial kitchen that you can utilize when you're in there. So most of it has been corporate board meetings and things like that, where you're talking anywhere from 10 to 40 people. It's all indoors and, you know, it's happening during the day.
So the normal traffic hours, if we're talking corporate, is probably going to be somewhere in the eight to five range?
Eight to five range, give or take. Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right. And then the, you mentioned portable lighting.
Um, so we would have some lighting for outdoor events, you know, specifically like things like Buddy Bash. We have lighting around those three pavilions. The majority of the lighting is directly underneath the pavilion. We work on it in such a way that there is minimal, if no, uh, light escape from the immediate surrounding area. And then certainly the goal would be that we have no light infiltration, certainly to those properties to the north. They're far enough away that I think we can, you know, manage that without any light infiltration there. And if anything, very minimal and ideally no light infiltration to that property to the south. Again, with the built-up wooded, uh, replanted area between the two properties. I think that's, you know, we will have lighting for some of the outdoor events at night. You know, we're really talking about a handful of nighttime outdoor events. And, um, those would be like Buddy Bash where we have minimal lighting that stays within the confines of the area that we're utilizing.
I'm not, yeah, okay. I'm not as worried about the lighting because you're right, you can keep it in the confines. But if it's portable lighting, it's normally on a diesel generator or some type of fixed machine like that. So I'm worried a little bit more about the noise aspect?
Absolutely. If I may have a question for the commissioner?
I was going to use the map, actually, um, for where we locate the sound.
Sorry, can you just?
I'm sorry.
Actually, like, name and address, please?
Uh, Corianne Chapello. My address is 1205 Willard Avenue in Newington, but I am representing Camp Current as their CEO.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. So.
Right here is where the DJs and things go. There's not sound throughout these areas. And if there is sound, it's going to be against the building. So all of these buffers, like he was saying, would really aid in that and sound going out. And again, Buddy Bash is our largest fundraiser. It's four hours with sound. So we have music playing throughout the evening. And again, there's been no noise complaints about that. And there's also a presentation where there's a microphone and we have a live footage of all of those people. So that all happens within this building and this is pavilion is really what's set up to host the events. There's curtains along the pavilion that get closed. So it's a very intimate gathering. I mean, I don't know how much sound gets out of that too, but. It it's very quiet in the sense of if you're on the street, you're not hearing that that's going on up there.
Maybe, hang on, all right.
I'm sorry, am I not understanding?
No, you're not understanding. Let me clarify. Portable lighting is normally a tow behind trailer of some sort that is run by a generator type machine. So that's what I'm worried about is the noise and the hum.
Yeah, there's electricity through the camp. So when we do bring in portable or external lighting, we're actually plugging it into.
Okay.
The camp electric.
So we're not bringing in light towers like they see up on the highway.
That's correct.
That's what I'm, okay, that's what I'm.
Literally wired through the entire camp because we have pavilions that go down into the woods that have electricity, the stage. All of these things have been wired.
Okay, that's a little bit different. Okay, perfect. And then we, you did talk about the noise and the and the external amplification and all that stuff. We are going to limit that to somewhere around ten thirty, correct?
Of course, yeah, of course. Our application says ten P M.
Perfect.
At the latest.
Perfect. Okay. And then I see here, we're going to review that for three years, Shannon.
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
That's for the commission to discuss.
Yeah, I think that's a great recommendation.
And we also offered as part of our application to provide updates every six months as well as what we're doing, what kind of events we've had. And to the extent that we've had any complaints, we would obviously follow up with the town and and make sure that we deal with those.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not a big fan of trying to limit people to. Enhance their property or kind of support themselves and you guys do a great job with the camp. It's it's, you know, it's free, like you said, to the kids. And I understand, be a shame if you couldn't keep supporting it and 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 going because it's a great place for the kids. And I can understand why you want to generate the income. We just want to make sure that it doesn't affect the neighbors to the point where now you become not nice neighbors. Let's put it that way.
That's our goal as well, is to to be able to work with the town and the neighbors to make sure that as we go through this and do this, that it works. And you know, if there are complaints, we will work with the neighbors in the town to address those going forward.
Perfect. That's what I want to hear. Excellent. I have no more questions. Thanks.
No questions for me. Thanks for presentation.
Thank you.
Dave.
You talked about you have small, medium, large, extra large events. The extra large events, the biggest ones, five hundred. Can you talk about the other ones you're thinking about?
We work with a lot of community organizations, Food Share, for example, and they have over a hundred employees. So if they wanted to come and do a corporate retreat during the day where their hundred employees got to come and have a picnic at camp, it would again be during the day. But that would be a larger event.
Are you picturing most of these events to happen during the weekends or mostly during the week?
I would say mostly during the week. They have been like interests to us during the weeks. If we work with a community partner alongside that wants a space like that, it's usually, they want something during their working hours. They don't want them to be paying them outside of that for the weekend.
And do you have an events coordinator kind of be there hanging out, watching what's going on?
Yes, this would be Tricia. We will always have staff on site.
And I guess the question for Shannon is, my my first concern when I heard about this is just the traffic in the residential neighborhood. Have we ever heard any complaints about that?
No.
Even during Buddy Bash?
No.
Yeah.
No.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I too will thank you for your presentation and I think the things you do for the kids is really important and hope that you can continue that. So in terms of the events, I I think my concerns are. Probably mirroring some of my fellow commissioners, you know, I don't think, you know, during the day. We have any issues with people coming in for board meetings and things like that. But I guess where where I'm, my head is at is probably to some degree, the cumulative effect of other things that we have approved. And increased traffic in that area generally, especially towards the end of the day and on weekends. So would you, you know, if we were to ask you to limit those, and I'm not saying we're going to, I just want to explore this a little bit more. Can you, if you, if you are focusing on during the day things. In addition to your existing events, will you still be viable? Because the evening things, I think, would be the things that might be problematic. And maybe we would want to, you know, let you do them and then come back and look at them. I think that's where the the net of concerns are. Can you talk a little bit about those events that might stretch into the evening? And that are more noisy and more have all the issues we're sort of talking about, you know, weddings or things like that.
Do you want to just talk about the events real quick and then I can talk about traffic, like what we might be thinking that would go into the evening?
Yeah. We're at the end of the day, a free camp, right? So we won't allow any event whatsoever that somehow violates any of our moral conduct or anything that we believe in or stand behind. Because at the end of the day, it is representing camp. So if it's an event that's going to be held there at a large scale, it has to be something that not only aligns with us, that makes sense. So if it was a wedding, that you have like an intimate ceremony, I'm assuming, and then a reception where you're having people eat. Maybe do a little dancing in the outdoor pavilion, I said, because that's again, the only one that could hold it and then wrapping up and going home. So I think the internal flow of that and how those events would go. Would be very simple and again, much smaller than we already run with Buddy Bash. Anything outside of that would be a corporate retreat that we've been thinking. We would not be taking on more than like maybe one wedding a year, if we could even get a wedding a year. I don't think that that's something that our primary focus is on. It's just getting people in to see camp, support camp. And using the funding again to send kids to camp.
And then I think to more directly address your concerns about, you know, obviously you've approved that new site to the south. You are approving more things that will build up and have more traffic on Patterson Park Road. We absolutely understand that. And I think most of our events are going to be as stated, things that happen during the day. So we're talking kind of eight to five. I think there might be, you know, with people coming home to that area to the to the property of the south and maybe the residential neighborhoods. Versus the people leaving the the events at five o'clock, I think, you know, that traffic flow should work pretty well. And that they're kind of going against each other. You're not necessarily building up too much traffic from that. But, you know, to the extent that things do go into the evenings, it's going to be, as stated, probably not as many. You know, talking about maybe one or two weddings a year, maybe a couple corporate events that go into the evenings. And I think, you know, potentially to the extent that there is going to be a traffic concern, it might be at that five P M hour. When when things are getting out here and maybe, like I said, people are going home and the other places are leaving the other corporate offices nearby. Our experience so far has been even at five P M, that Patterson Park Road has more than sufficed. It's 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 still not a very busy road. But of course, if that becomes a problem and we see that becoming a problem, that's something that we would absolutely want to work both with the town and with neighbors. You know, we don't want to be a bad neighbor here. We're trying to, you know, we'd like to work with our neighbors to be able to make this work. And if it turns out that there's a problem at those hours, then that's something that we can consider. You know, maybe there's, we don't end events at five. We end things at four or we end things at six or something like that. So there isn't that direct overlap. But so far, you know, Patterson Park Road is not a super busy road even at at these times. But understanding the development that you guys have approved going forward, you know, that's something that we would absolutely be be happy to watch out for. And to come back to you and have that discussion if we need to later on.
Thank you very much. I'm all set. Bruce. All right, I have a few questions. First, I want to say though, hugely supportive of what the organization does. So my questions are what other commissioners asked, like getting at protecting the neighborhood. And to be honest, we've had some experience in town with event sites and had some struggles. I'll just leave it at that. So I want to be really careful with with how we proceed with this. But the outside activities. Where would those take place? Could they be anywhere? Like, I noticed there's a field like way up, I don't know what direction it is, so way up to the top. Like, it would be open to any of those spaces if you.
No, you would book a specific area. We could do a town club soccer field at the soccer field. Same thing with the basketball courts, if we wanted to do something like that, the swimming, if we wanted to do swimming lessons. We have talked about trying to partner with towns and local departments because there aren't always accessible fields and basketball courts and swimming pools. So a partnership there is obviously open, but again, it'd be very specifically booked. Each pavilion would have its own booking as well as indoor space.
Okay, so that's a soccer field at the top? I couldn't tell.
It's soccer and baseball, correct? Yeah, it has both.
All right, now that helps. Thank you. So I think the, well, let me ask a question first. So the list of events, the bolded list of events, anywhere from, you know, ten to forty people, up to a hundred people that you have. I don't know what page it's on. Would those be occurring when camp is in session too?
No.
Okay, so we take camp runs from what, middle of June to end of August, I think.
The end of June, it's six straight weeks. So it's, it goes off the Hartford School System calendar, so it doesn't always have the same dates. But it's six consecutive weeks. This year, June twenty third to August first.
So the the window, if you're not doing a lot of winter events, the window on events is actually relatively small. Because you're squeezing out six weeks of the summer as well. So I guess my concern is just the the number of events listed. And I I just want to make sure you're amenable to us talking about that and working with you to maybe adjust those numbers a little bit.
But I I think the majority of, you know, the majority of the events would not be outdoor events. You know, the vast majority of these events are indoor events. So we would be booking theoretically year round on on those events, those indoor, like especially board meetings, corporate meetings and things like that. That's all indoor. That would be booked year round to the extent that we are talking about, you know, summer events. Or, you know, obviously, one of the things that Coryanne mentioned is using the space to book with the city of Hartford or Farmington or New Britain or whomever. To to find baseball fields or soccer fields or something, that would be happening, obviously, within the spring and fall when those seasons exist. But yes, that, you know, to the extent that you would be booking a large outdoor event. You do have kind of a limited window from maybe the late spring and the early fall to kind of do that. But we're not talking about a ton of those. We're talking about a handful at most of those events, most of the events being smaller indoor events.
Okay. And the types of events that you have listed, would you be comfortable saying those are the only types of events that you're going to do?
Yeah.
If we put that stipulation in?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Just one check. Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. I'm going to open it up to the public and see what feedback we get and then we'll kind of go from there. So this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak for an opposition to this application, come on up to the podium.
Okay, if anyone has called in online to offer comment on the Camp Current application at ninety six Patterson Park, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Mr. Chair, there is a hand raised. Sarah, you should be able to unmute your microphone. And please provide your name and address and address your comments to the commission, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Sarah Andlin. My property is forty two, two mile road. I think it's number, yeah, forty two on the map there. And we're just very supportive of the of the project. I think we all want, and I've talked to the neighbors as well, we want Camp Current to succeed. I think what would be more concerning is if they were not successful and had to sell the property to a development. And, you know, we're really excited about all the investment in the surrounding areas with Patterson Park. So I think we're, I'm just voicing support for the project as someone who is, you know, my property line does a butt against Camp Current.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else has called in to offer comment regarding the Camp Current application at ninety six Patterson Park Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there is no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. So. Discussion. So I guess I'm going to start it by saying, and I I think others alluded to it, I think we need to be. Very careful in making sure this is buttoned up tight from previous experience in terms of how we set sort of the quote unquote rules around this. Including numbers of events, types of events and amplified sound and all those kinds of things. So with that being said, one, I think we need to work some of those details out. And two, I'm going to recommend that we don't vote on it tonight, but that we come up with some rules, let Shannon redraft. What we come up with and then vote on it two weeks. So I guess, starting with that statement, kind of where folks at, Matt?
Given our history.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea. I I agree with you. I think we want to make sure we get it right now.
Yep.
And if we need to take that time and draft it up, I think that's the appropriate course of action.
Agreed. Um, yeah, I'm not worried so much about, you know, the small micro events, the ten fifteen, up to forty people.
Yep.
And it's basically like an office building, you know, an office being open. That's not my concern. My my concern is, like you're saying, the noise outside in the vents. And that's why I was a little bit more cautious with the lighting, because that hum, we don't want that decibel to get up there. So yeah, let's get it right and this way we don't have to worry about it in the future. Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm super pro. Delaying this, I think it's, I mean, they provided enough information as to the number of the events and. You know, given that it's not too many. And they said that the the number of night events are very, very, it's a very, you know, few nights. That they're going to have those events and it's mostly corporate. And I work in a corporate environment. I've been to many corporate events and I know exactly what they're talking about. It's, you know, corporate events happen during the day with, as they said, forty, fifty people. If, you know, sometimes twenty people, ten people and then, you know, board meetings and all that. So and then the fact that the town has proposed to have a permit review. I think that's a great thing that they also agreed to. So I I'm I'm for voting and I'm for it tonight. So that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Dave.
Can you give an example of what are the things you'd like to see kind of tightened up?
Well, I want to make sure that we have everything related to the sound. There were a lot of things mentioned to to noise. I want to make sure, like, I'll just speak for myself, I'm not comfortable with the number of events. I think it's too many that are listed here. I think saying, and I I heard what you said, Roja, I think saying corporate events, but this doesn't say a hundred corporate events, it's just as a hundred events. And again, like, just from my experience with other locations, if we don't get this tight, it's going to end up here again. And it's going to be because of complaints. So that's what I want to be careful of. I certainly want Camp Current to succeed, but I want to make sure that we sort of cross our t's and dot our i's, so to speak.
I understand. You're, you have more experience, I guess, on on these issues. I I wasn't here when you had other.
Battle scars or whatever term you want to use. Yes.
Experience.
Sometimes they go hand in hand, as you probably know too, right? Yeah, I just, it it's nothing against what they're trying to do. It's just about making sure that we get it right so that it's not something that creeps up again. And with other locations, it did because we weren't buttoned up. It was too vague.
Yeah.
And it ended up causing problems. So like, if we want to say. You know, fifty corporate events, that's different to me than just saying fifty events. Because. There could be all sorts of different things. So I guess just some thoughts. I just stole all Dave's time, so. Dave, you're out of time. Sorry, cut you off. You did.
Asked the question.
And I ran with it.
Yeah, no, and I'm I'm fine. I think we're positive, we're all looking positively at this. It's something we want to happen. But I think that if we could just make some clarifications, you know, not only for Camp Current, but also for the neighborhood to be able to say to people. You know, they can know what they're going to expect. I think that makes sense.
I did not close.
Okay, so just, we we are perfectly fine with if we want to work with you over the next two or however many weeks to to button this down. And and to get those details in place. We don't have anything scheduled for the next two weeks that we would need a permit for. So, you know, we're perfectly happy to to work with you and and help as you're talking about button this down and kind of be more specific about what we're permitting.
And I appreciate that. And that's why I didn't close the hearing, because I want to have the ability for us to go back and forth if need be.
Yeah, thank you. So we, thank you.
I I too am aligned with thinking this through and as a couple of people said, let's let's get it right.
Uh, I, I too am aligned with thinking this through and as a couple of people said, let's, let's get it right. Do a little bit of uh cross-referencing and analysis of the events, the timing of those events, when they happen. Um, we'll just go back and look at the traffic study vis-à-vis what we have, I mean, we, we can do a little bit of offline analysis that I think would behoove us. And then come back with a set of uh requests and how we would like to see this framed that puts things forward in the best, uh, best light. So I'm, I'm aligned with that activity.
Can we, can we start working on the numbers, like the numbers of events? I think we need to give Shannon a little bit more to go on to sort of redraft something for next time, so.
We'd be happy to provide a more detailed breakdown of what we mean when we say small event, medium event with numbers of people. And maybe confine that to, you know, we're talking X number of corporate events versus X number of non-corporate events, things like that. I think we can, we can work to, to refine those numbers in the next couple of days so we can get something to Shannon and get something to you within the next, you know, week or so.
And indoor and outdoor, I think would help too.
Absolutely, we can, we can, we can definitely break that down, yep.
Yeah, having an understanding, so I think if I'm understanding the commission, there's a little less concern with indoor. And when you say indoor, it's in this main building, it's not just the pavilion, is that, so it's.
That's correct.
It's in this main building?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and then these pavilions, and say, there's, I don't know, three?
There's really three at the bottom, I, I never really considered that middle one for whatever reason in my head, but yes, there's really three.
Okay, and then the, a fourth here.
Yeah.
And then this is the larger one that it wears the buddy bash.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, but any of these three to the, to the south of the main building could hold in an outdoor event? There's picnic tables and that type of elements in there?
We have picnic tables that we move around the campus, um, I would say that no one would pick those because it is closest to like the centerfold.
Okay.
Um, that they would probably pick almost every, yeah, we do everything back there because it is the most secluded.
Okay, so this is really like when kids are arriving and this is like arrival and staging.
And we use that in the summer for like, uh, rain days, obviously it was our biggest area, but our camp kids, we have seven hundred and fifty a day. So we have to utilize all thirty-six acres we have, um, and we definitely utilize throughout the pavilions and throughout the whole campus. And again, the camp season's probably the loudest you'll ever have for most, um, with the seven hundred and fifty kids. So anything past that's probably really, really low volume, but.
Okay, so the internal then though, just to come back, is the, the main building and then any of the outdoor events would use this pavilion. But then some of it did indicate an ability to use some of the facility area as well as part of the narrative.
Mm-hmm. And we keep saying event because that's what we're obviously applying for, but the indoor, they're really meetings. I mean, if you're holding a board meeting, you're holding a networking group, it's, it's a meeting, it's not.
Not an event?
Yeah.
So it's at least of the indoor space, but the event, the event's really from an outdoor standpoint?
And with weather, sometimes those indoor meetings want to just be outside and be able to be out in nature, but they're still, so they might have forty people doing a lecture. But they're sitting just listening to a lecture, um, so the noise, again, there's no amplified sound, there's nothing going out. Um, so that's why when we tried to break down the events that we did with indoor/outdoor, when we say small event, that's really what we're thinking of. It's going to be like a lecture or a presentation or a, a working group of people.
Okay.
I don't know if that's helpful to everybody. Yeah, it's really more of a meeting and that, it was a gray area for us, so identifying as a meeting or an event, because, you know, there, there could be snacks, there could be, you know. Um, but that's what we're looking to do, is just be able to host those.
And when we're, we're talking about the outdoor areas, we're really talking about like maybe the handful of kids' birthday parties or something that might want to rent the basketball court. Or coordinating with towns to utilize the basketball court, swimming pools, the baseball field, the soccer field, uh, as part of maybe a recreational activity with the town. And, you know, we'd be happy also to, you know, as part of the breakdown we do, you know, define, you know, these events will take place in, in the interior building, you know, we'll mark it on the map and say, you know, uh, and then this event, you know, these number of events will take place in the outdoor pavilion, et cetera, et cetera.
That'd be really helpful.
The pool, aside from perhaps partnering with a municipality with respect to the pool, the pool is not used as, it's used for camp. But it would not be rented as part of a family reunion or a birthday party or, I, I'm curious as to the intent with respect to that. Because I'm assuming then you would have to provide a lifeguard?
We would definitely provide multiple lifeguards, um, we have, there's certain amount per, whatever group size, you have to have a certain amount of lifeguards on duty per the event size, even if they're not all swimming. So if the event was a hundred people, you have to have, it's like five, four, um, it's, it's quite a few lifeguards.
Okay.
Um, yes, so we would have them on site if that was the case. We will only open and close the pool though for the camp season and a little after and a little before, because it costs us so much money to do that. So unless we had something special with the town or a swimming contract or something like that, that we would have no need to keep that open.
Understood, thank you.
It's the, well, I have you both of the podium again, I'm, I'm just really focused on the baseball soccer field for some reason. Why, why, is that closer to the residential areas?
It is.
A little bit, I guess.
Yeah, I think it is technically closer, we did, um, a, like a Google Maps distance between um, the far edge of the basketball courts and the nearest property, I think it was like six or seven hundred feet, maybe five hundred feet there from the six hundred and fifty feet, so it's a little, it's maybe fifty feet closer
Okay.
To the residences than the basketball courts are, although I would expect that you might get more noise off the basketball court than you might get off of the soccer field or the baseball field.
I'm just wondering, I, I think you could get a lot of business there, just from what we know are the demands in town for athletic fields and stuff, I don't know if that's what you were alluding to, Bobby. Um, so one, one thing I'm just gonna throw out there to get your reaction, is you okay having no like PA system or amplified sound on that field?
I mean, that's gonna help us get this done.
Again, I'm just trying to think through things that we run into in other situations and that kind of amplified sound seems to travel a little bit more than.
I'm sorry, just of note, we do have a stage pavilion, um, yeah, right about there. That has sound, um, that has an amplifier and we have used that throughout the summer. So if any sound was coming from the area, which is literally touching the field, I feel that there would have been a noise complaint from it already. Um, and we do that, we have a talent show for the kids and all of that stuff during the camp season, so that is used with sound.
You keep tricking me with these pavilions popping up, okay?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
We have another in the woods too, that's a yoga pavilion that's closer.
Well, we won't worry about that.
Or from like summertime when everything's vegetated, I can't find overheads in the winter, so.
Yeah.
You can see a little bit.
No, I, I, I know where you're going and you're absolutely right, I, you know, uh, when we're at a limit for soccer fields and cross fields.
Yeah, we've already had that done before the commission, right? Yeah.
I guess my question too, as we're working through limiting the numbers, of trying to figure out what that would mean, because obviously each tournament or each day of sports, is that one event or is it a season of sports? So like, we were trying to take that into consideration when we submitted these, to make sure that we didn't limit, limit ourselves too much where we say yes to saying, we're gonna do swimming lessons for four weeks. But then does that take, if they're coming twice a week for four weeks or something like that, that's eight events for us or is that different partnerships? So we were trying to build that into these numbers that we did submit in front of you.
That's something that, you know, we can try to redefine as we, you know, rewrite this in the next couple of days and work with Shannon to, maybe there's a way that we can say, you know, we'll utilize the baseball field or the soccer field on X number of days, or, you know, we will have X number of, you know, games permitted or something like that.
At this particular point in time, are you, the reality, the, there's the ideal and there's the reality. Uh, uh, has there been pursuit or conversations with any of the neighboring municipalities regarding utilizing the field or the courts or the pool for these, for a municipal, for a joint municipal type service?
We had, since we did the basketball courts, there has been requests for court space.
Okay.
I don't know that everyone knows we have the soccer field, um, and baseball field, so I'm sure as soon as we've said that. Um, I live in Newington, like I mentioned, and we have, my husband coaches lacrosse and there's always a shortage on field, so I've, I knew that that would be something that would be.
It also puts a lot of wear and tear, so it doesn't.
Oh, for sure.
So, so it's a double edge, uh, with regards to resting fields, so, um, I think I'd like to see if there's gonna be a municipal contract. I think for our, again, I'm thinking, so we're, one of the primary things, right, limitation in hours used and operations, it should be specific, measurable and enforceable. So if it's going to be a municipal contract, I think I'd like to see that as a separate line item. So for an exterior, and I don't know that I want to get into days, I, it may be seasons, right? There, there normally, you got a spring season of a fall season.
Mm-hmm.
If you're gonna do summer too and overlap with camp, because camp leaves at three, but you're gonna have somebody come in in the, in the evening, right? Account for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and do it by season, and then what the maximum time is. And if you are gonna light that rear field, so, you know, that rear field, yes, in the summer would work until eight-ish well. Um, past that, it's not gonna work well unless you're bringing in lights out there, I'm assuming there's not lights out there now?
No.
For that field, so the basketball courts are lit or no?
No.
Okay, so I, I think we keep it to daylight hours to start with so that we're not bringing in lights all over the place.
Right.
Um, but do that as a separate line item so that we can kind of.
Would, would it make sense to say something along the lines of, you know, uh, to the extent that we're gonna utilize it for a municipal contract? That maybe we have to get like administrative approval from the town for that municipal con, like
I, I don't.
That municipal contract or something that, you know, though it's kind of separate from the.
I think we, we need to know about it, so as part of the tally, I don't want to, this isn't gonna benefit either one, if every single time it's gotta come
Yeah.
Come through us for, for these, so I don't want to get into that. Um, I don't think, it's not gonna be helpful, but I think as part of a tally, you know, yes, we had X number of contracts and this is. But this way, if my phone's ringing off the hook, everybody's gonna know, so.
We'll try not to make it that much more busy then, so.
Yeah. So, but I do, I think, um, perhaps that's, is kind of a separate, that's different, right? That's different than a family reunion, it's different, you know, but then you're also now dealing with who's ever coached, right? Parent co, and all the coaches handle these things differently, so you've got a, you know, it's, again, and, and even for something like that, the expectation would be that somebody from Camp Current is on the property.
Yes, that, that will always be the case, that as long as it's.
That starts to become labor intensive for you folks as well. That's my thought on that, is that it's a separate line item.
But what, what we'll do when we do the breakout is we'll include potential contracts with municipalities for the use of the fields. We'll limit it to, as you pointed out, the sunlight hours and, you know, include that as kind of a separate number.
Okay.
Other thoughts, commissioners?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, man, I think ultimately we're trying to come up with something that works for you all on the camp and helps it succeed, but also protects the town and the, the residents in the area. So I appreciate the, the willingness to work with us. So.
I think Ryan and I have a little work to do on that.
Yep. That's what we like to do, is just pass off the work to Shannon, so. Can we get a, can we get a motion? Sure, yeah, the hearing's still open, Dave.
Dave Lekowski, uh, twenty-eight Mountain Road, Farmington, Connecticut, liaison from the Town Council to, uh, to the Town Planning and Zoning. Yeah, I think really what we've captured here tonight is like a, a great kind of, uh, they're coming forward with transparency. You're considering it, you got your questions, and I think as the chairperson, Scott, you did a great job. Because I think taking a couple steps back and just fine tuning this thing from their end to your end just makes complete sense. Um, I think because Farmington with our land use is so unique, right? We have these little pockets of, of, of very interesting scenic space that can be passive regurgitation, can host all different kind of events. And we want to make sure that, you know, we certainly want to make sure that everybody is heard and, and, and brought into the equation. I think our land use professionals are some of the best and they're gonna hone in on their requirements and we're gonna, we're gonna have this partnership for a long time. And I think the partnership is just, uh, is just something we want to do for, for Camp Current. And I can, I, I, I don't usually speak for the whole council, but I, I'll, I'll take the liberty to speak for the whole council and to, and say that I think the council would be in full support of this.
Thanks, Dave, appreciate it. So I think we're at the point of getting a motion in a second to continue.
Continue.
To, what's the next meeting, March ten?
March ten, yeah.
Thank you.
The hearing open, Mr. Chair, so that it allows for some dialogue and information back from the app.
Yes, if I, I assumed by not closing it, I was leaving it open, do I need to?
No, no, just making sure that that's around the same.
Okay, yes, leaving, leaving the hearing open, yes.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to continue the application for special permit by Hartford's Camp Current for charitable and philanthropic institution use for hosting events located at ninety-six Patterson Park Road, AKA eight-eight-zero-one-seven Patterson Park Road, R forty zone with a hearing date of March tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, all those in favor? I opposed, abstentions, motion passes, we'll see in a couple of weeks, thank you. All right, our second public hearing is the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, application for text amendment.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Garrett.
For the record, Garrett Diggle, Assistant Town Planner for the Town Farm. All right, so, uh, this is gonna be the mobile food vendors text amendment, also known as food trucks, but in order to be a little, a little broader, um, with the terminology, it would just be mobile food vendors, um, and this is for the C one and CR zones. The text will be found under the C one zone because in the regulations, CR zone just refers back to the C one for the permitted uses, so the uses are the same in both zones. Um, this will be under use allowed by special permit, so anything will come to the commission. Uh, mobile food vendors and iterant food vendor which operates out of a non-permanent structure that is self-propelled or towed by another vehicle and has a valid registration with the Connecticut Department of Motor Vehicles. This is to prevent someone just dropping a, a structure, a trailer, a, a, a food truck at a site and then never moving it. You gotta still be registered with the, you still have to have a registration with the Department of Motor Vehicles to help kind of keep that going. Um, the caveat being that this regulation shall not apply to vendors linked to a public event permit issued by the town manager or for private use. So this regulation is for public food trucks, so if there's, um, you know, Tunks is holding carnival, that wouldn't apply, this would not apply. Someone having a private party at their house or, or at a, a, a facility, they bring a food truck, Camp Current for an event, that would not apply. Employee appreciation events at any of the major, major, uh, facilities, again, it would not apply because it's not inviting the public, it's for their private use. All right, uh, all vendors shall complete a mobile food vendor, vendor registration form as prescribed by the town planner, which shall expire on June thirtieth of each year, such form shall include a plan showing compliance with this section. Um, the June thirtieth deadline or expiration date is to line up with the paddler's license that is issued by the Farmington Police Department, which is also required um, in the neck, uh, further down in this section, um, so that it's an annual permit. So again, you have to come back to us every year to get your permit renewed. If we're having an issue where you're not complying with the regulation, we don't have to issue the permit and you're gonna have to, to move on. Should, uh, you shall receive approval from the property owner for the pro site, plans, our reviews and any other conditions they require. So this is, you can't just pull up and set up shop, you need a signature from the, uh, property owner. With an initial application, uh, operator would have approval from the property owner, because they need it to apply for the application. But any future, you know, someone moves on, someone else wants to take over that spot, you still need to written, an approval from the property owner. Um, and then again, as I mentioned, receive a paddling license from the Farm, Police Department in accordance with chapter one forty-four of the Farmington Town Code. Um, again, the paddling license expires in, on June thirtieth, and we did review with the Police Department that a paddler's license would be required for a food truck. As mentioned in the agenda review, uh, we'll add in, provide proof of health district approval into this. If you recall, staff had pulled a couple, uh, sample regulations from other towns, um, the one that the commission liked had a larger, it was about twice the length of this regulation. Uh, most of that was stuff that will be included on the registration form. The reason for that being is that if we want to change anything on the registration form, it doesn't require a public hearing with the commission, it's just the staff. You know, if we decide we don't need a proof of their registration or, or something like that anymore, or if we want to add, we want a certificate of assurance, something like that. Again, it's just staff revising the application, doesn't have to come back to the commission to, to go through the whole process again for just minor changes. Um, I did provide a copy of the registration form, I think it was included at the agenda review and just, it's shown on here. Um, once the regulation is adopted, we will include all the texts on the form, um, so that way it's clear, you have to read it in order to, to sign it. Um, we ask for. Um, we ask for contact information, the property owner's contact information, if there's a valid site plan. Name, name of the business, type of food, make, model of the vehicle. Do you have a paddler's license or you're within five hundred feet of a restaurant, uh, type of service, how much seating is provided, things like that. Um, and then at the end of the form, we just mentioned the prohibited signs, that comes up later in the regulation. Again, if there's a change in the prohibited sign regulation, we would revise this accordingly. All right, next up is the standards for the food trucks, uh, mobile food vendors, I'm sorry, so. Uh, first up is location, vendor shall only be permitted on private property with an active business and as accessory use. So you can't be located on a trail property, can't be located on a vacant property. Um, there should be no more than one vendor for each whole or part of one acres and not more than three vendors per property. So this is you need, i- if you have zero to one acres, you can have a a food truck. You can't have a second one until you're over the one acres, no more than three total. Um, if we had a situation where more were coming in, that'd probably be more like a food truck park. And we'd have to amend the regulations, at this point, we're just looking at single, small, small grouping of vendors. Um, all vendors and associated equipment shall comply with the parking setbacks of the zone or with an existing impervious area. No vendor shall be located within five hundred feet of a restaurant as defined in these regulations. Unless written approval, the restaurateur has provided to the town, the distance shall be measured from the property line. Again, you can co-locate, but you need the restaurant operator's approval. Even if it's it's on a separate property, it's more so to protect the local businesses from from, uh, vendors if need be. Um, all generators shall be placed and properly maintained to ensure compliance with chapter one thirty-five of the Farmington Town Code, which is our noise ordinance. Um, no vendor or so or associated seating and queuing area shall obstruct the flow of internal traffic or the adjacent roadway. And shall be, the vehicle shall be located on an impervious surface. Continuing on with standards, um, portable structures including tables and seating, umbrellas or similar structures shall be stored when not in use. And any such portable structure and storage structures shall require site plan approval. Um, again, in the agenda review, I'll include that specifying only single pole umbrellas. Um, and that tents and canopy shall not be permitted. Um, the umbrellas and similar structures would be if you've got a retractable awning on the side of your vehicle. Or if the side of the vehicle lifts up, that provides the 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 shielding for people so they can order out of elements. Um, that's kind of where that general, that similar structures falls under. Um, parking, there should be five parking spaces for each vendor plus employees. And then when seating is provided, one additional space shall be provided for every four seats. Parking may be shared internally to the site in accordance with article five, uh, four, section eight of these regulations. With property owner approval and does not impact the parking demand for the existing uses. Um, generally, the restaurant regulation requires one space per two seats or one space per three seats. The assumption here is being that we're already requiring the five spaces to start, we can increase that. The number of seats allotted to a parking space with the assumption that we're already providing some spaces to begin with. Again, it's a mobile food vendor, you're not gonna have thirty tables, um, like you would at a normal restaurant, you're gonna have a few picnic tables, something like that. Um, and then the shared parking is for offset demand, so if you're at a property with a coffee shop and you're serving lunch and dinner. You're not really gonna have matching peaks, so the parking you can use for the food truck when the coffee shop is closed and vice versa. So that way we're not actually having to require additional parking spaces provided they're meeting the regulation. All right, uh, under, we've got a section for signs, uh, permitting one A-frame style sign for advertising, not more than twelve square feet in area. And shall be permitted on the property while the vendor is open, that does not accept travel, obstruct travel or sightlines entering, exiting or throughout the property. Offsite signs are not permitted except as noted in article four, section seven, which is the sign regulation. Um, sign shall not project above the roof or sides of the vehicle or trailer. Signs located on a vehicle or trailer may be externally illuminated in accordance with section four lighting of this section, which is, uh, the next section. Um, again, as mentioned in the agenda review, I'll be, I would propose adding signs printed or affixed to an umbrella shall not be permitted. Um, so that's kind of the alcohol branded umbrellas or branded umbrellas for the truck, just keep it simple. Um, so that we don't have increased advertising. Um, lighting, there shall be no lighting which flashes, dances or animates. Vendor shall use existing lighting on site to the extent feasible. Additional lighting may be permitted provided it does not exceed four thousand Kelvin color temperature. And does not shine or cause glare into adjacent property or roadways, lighting shall only be on during the operation business or with staff approval. Um, again, assuming you're in a parking lot, there's existing lighting, if there's not sufficient lighting. Staff can review, you know, some additional lighting to to, you know, for safety and for people to see, but everything's gotta be turned off when you're closed. Pretty similar to how we treat most of the site plans for businesses, uh, for lighting. Um, continuing on, uh, vendor shall make adequate accommodations for removal and disposal of trash and all receptables shall be emptied at the close of business each day. Again, not leaving overflowing trash cans when you close for the day, it's gotta be taken off-site or disposed of in a in the dumpster. Staff did include a section, uh, each vendor shall be required to provide one portlet if customer seating is provided. If no customer seating is provided and services go only, no portlet shall be required, portlet location shall be shown on the site plan. And shall be screened from view for adjacent residential properties, portlets shall be serviced at a minimum on a weekly basis. Staff did review the the regulation with the Economic Development Commission, as we'll come up, uh, in the public hearing portion. Uh, they requested that this section be removed for concerns of, uh, extra burden on on business owners. And then if the truck leaves and the porta potty, the portlet is still there, it might become unsightly. We put them around town for the trails, but that's a different, you know, different areas, people know to expect them, so this is kind of. Um, the recommendation was that, so it wouldn't be a as much of a burden and and obvious throughout town. Regional proposal, vendor hours shall be limited to eight AM to seven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and eight AM to eight PM, Friday and Saturday. As mentioned in the gender review, staff will propose revising this to just, then hours shall be limited at eight AM to eight PM blanket throughout the week. No vendor shall create any noise, smoke, odor, toxic fumes, vibration, radio interference or other unsuitable conditions. That creates a public health or safety concern, public nuisance, or would otherwise. Or otherwise would degrade the properties surrounding the location, and then no vendor shall use amplified music or public address systems of any kind. I did give some examples of what is not allowed and what is allowed, uh, to try and put the public and the commission's, uh, concerns at rest, so. Flashing lights, signs that project above the above the the vehicle or the trailer, signs over twelve square feet, they're located on the lawn. That would not be allowed. Um, if we go down to what is allowed. On the left, we've got a regular food truck, on the right, we've got a trailer, the signs don't project above the roof, there's no external illumination. They're located on an impervious surface. Um, A-frame, A-frame sign, and then lastly, um, just so everyone's aware of. Kind of the areas where this would be allowed, this is the map of Farmington showing just the CR and C one industrial zones. So this is, it's pretty limited in where the location would would be. That's the proposal.
Thanks, Garrett.
Any questions?
Matt, any questions?
Good presentation, questions?
Bob, no questions.
Yes, hi Garrett, thank you for the presentation. What is the rationale behind not allowing them to put an umbrella with, uh, you know, branding on the umbrella?
Um, it's just to kind of cover our bases, so we can't regulate what the umbrella says per, um, case law. And Supreme Court for First Amendment issues, so for example, you can't say you're allowed to have umbrellas that have your business name on it. But you're not allowed to have alcohol branded umbrellas, so if we just say, just blanket plain umbrella, it, we don't have to worry about. Um, kind of the proliferation of some of the, some of the brighter umbrellas or, you know, the giant alcohol brands on it or something like that, that are. Really advertising for the alcohol brands, even though they wouldn't really be able to be sold as far as I'm aware.
So is that an issue?
Um, not currently, we don't really have anyone.
But we try to do the same with our restaurants. So the restaurants, we try to limit, so the outdoor patio is an outdoor seating, that it's a, just a, pick a color and have a color as opposed to. Branding, um, and it's technically additional signage, so it's not per, so it's technically signage, it hasn't been permitted, so.
I see, thanks, um, and thanks, Jim. And a second question about the portable toilets or, um, as you call it, port. Portlets, yes, that was a new one. Wha- what was the ba- basis for this? Because was was it in another, uh, other towns regulations that you decided to?
No, it was something staff included just to kind of cover our bases, um, so that way if restroom facilities were needed. Um, you know, you think about, if there was a neighboring, a business there, you wouldn't want members of the public going there, not patronizing the business, just use the restroom. So it's trying to, trying to cover that. We, I did speak with the Health District and they wouldn't require restroom facilities because, uh, picnic tables are not viewed as permanent seating per the Health Code. So that's why restaurants provide a restroom and a food truck would not, it was trying to cover our bases in reviewing with the. Economic Development Commission, they preferred that we not have them, um, so it would be proposed that that get removed from the regulation.
You're saying that will get removed or?
Well, it it, yeah, so it was, the regulation was written, it's proposed, the suggestion would be that if the commission votes to approve that, that section would be removed.
Oh, I see, so we need to approve it or not?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thanks so much, that's it for me.
Dave.
Thanks for all of your work on this, I know it's a lot, I know it's a lot.
We give care of all the fun stuff.
Um, I'm excited about it, I love food trucks, um, I did have, um, and I'm actually glad about taking out the portlet thing. I think that does put a big burden on the person. But I'm wondering, what's preventing someone from just parking and sitting and not operating for several months at a time? And is that, maybe it's not a problem, but.
There wouldn't be, um, I mean, that's on the the, it, the business owner owns the vehicle, if it's just sitting there, it's not making the money. The presumption is be that if you're parked here, you're you're open for, at least for a portion, you know, maybe you're not open seven days a week, but you're open some days during the week. It's an annual permit, so theoretically if someone parked July, it's June thirtieth that expires. Um, if you parked it on July first and you decided not to do anything and it just sat there. Uh, June thirtieth rolls around, you don't renew the permit and it's still parked there, it'd be considered a zoning violation. Um, and that's on the, uh, vendor application, um, right above the signature block, it says. I have read and understood the relevant zoning regulations and will do my best to comply with the regulations. Failures to do so will result in the issuance of a notice of violation and potentially fines of up to a hundred and fifty dollars per day for non-compliance and revocation of the lines with. Of the license with the town of Farmington. Um, additionally, we, so the, the form would also be sent to the police department and the health districts, they're aware. Um, and then obviously, if we were communicating with the police department, they would possibly not issue another paddler's license, so they wouldn't be allowed to operate at all.
There's also the underlying property owner.
Yeah.
Right, so the underlying property owner doesn't want a, a vehicle there that's not doing anything presumably. Or certainly if it starts to become unsightly, the, that underlying property owner, presumably there's an agreement, a rental or lease agreement. For the food truck to to be there, so we'd have some leverage with the underlying property owner as well.
Once, once, uh, it's, let's, let's say it gets approved, once that happens, how soon would people be able to apply and start using it?
Uh, it takes about thirty days for the regulation to take.
Yeah, so the the regulation gets posted, uh, within fifteen days of the close of the vote, um, and there's a fifteen day appeal period. Um, but again, it it requires a special permit, so it's a public hearing process with the commission. It's not, it's not like in, after those thirty days, people walk in, we sign the permit and they're they're golden, it's still a public hearing process. To at least get the location approved, vendors could change. Again, within reason, you know, if you propose an eight-foot long trailer. And the next person comes in with a twenty-six foot long truck, that'd probably require a revision with the commission. Um, to ensure it's still meet, meeting the site plan, but you know, if you're going twenty to twenty-six to twenty or twenty to twenty-six, it might not be as. As large a deal as long as you're still complying with with the regulation.
So it's still some time before this could really happen?
Yes.
We have an application that's been submitted to our office already, which is the one that precipitated this. So our intent is to try to get that process efficiently.
So I guess my thinking would be is, because it's the first time we're doing this, we're just starting out, maybe considering prorating the application for this year. Not making you pay for up to June and then pay and then pay June again.
There's no fee.
The special permit, the special permit fee is gonna, is a one-time fee. So the special, the registration is simply an administration and on our, so the special permit and public hearing is gonna come with you folks once. Is then we're gonna have to track it on a staffing level. And those registrations, that will be done annually with our office in conjunction with the police department. But there's no fee for the registration. So that that'll just be a renewal, so assuming if John Smith is doing everything that they're supposed to be doing. Then they come back in the next year and and file and do their new registration form, we check with the owner, the owner's all good, everybody's good. It just goes, it'll just go through.
Yeah, very good. All right, thank you.
First, Garrett, I too want to thank you for all the work on this. Um, one, one small, small net, the A-frame signs, uh, twelve square feet. I'm thinking that's like a three by four piece of plywood, so twelve square feet per side?
Yes, yeah, that's generally how we do, I I took a guess.
Buy that or am I just overthinking it?
No, no, that, it's, so usually when you're referring to sign area, you're referring to one side and you count. You don't count both sides. Some municipalities, if you've got a V-shaped sign or or a blade sign or something like that, that, that's at an angle. It's really more of a full sign, it's not really, this, this, you'll only see it one direction, sometimes they'll count that as as a total area. As opposed to just one side, the A-frame, we're counting just the one side. Yeah, you could put it this way, you could put it facing the road, so you'll only see it from the road, you can put it. Uh, perpendicular to the road, so you can see it going both directions. I took as a stab with the the three to four, um, it's winter, so not many people have their A-frame sign out to go out and measure. Um, but a three by four is is a good size, it's a plain sheet really for for us, it's two, twenty-four by thirty-six is a standard plain sheet for us, so. Figured that was a good size.
Makes sense, thank you. It was perfect, I don't have anything to, thank you.
Master Chair.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Uh, maybe it's more for Shannon, because we have a concerned citizen here, uh, Mr. Dunn.
So I was gonna do the correspondence.
Okay, um, may I ask it or should I wait for?
But I will get to the, so that I'm gonna put all, because we've got Krog, EDC and Mr. Dunn's letter, I'll put him into the record.
Uh, yes, I wanted to ask about the issue that he raised, um, so when there's a public event. And the permit is issued by the town manager, the person who has the the truck can forego the regulations, why is that? Where do we get that authority?
So our public event permits, all the public event permits for Farmington. Initiate with the town manager's office and go through a checklist of all the town departments in Farmington. So that, um, Dream Ride, for example, right, is our, probably one of our more well-known public events. They come through, there's a public event permit that comes in, it's initiated with the town manager's office. And runs through all, all the departments, um, including police and fire. Um, our highway department, our rec department, um, myself, um, building. So to check to make sure that there isn't a a zoning issue. We, me, right, so I do the zoning sign-off on these public event permits. Not that the the town manager just makes sure all her staff has reviewed these. And has had an opportunity to look at them, everybody's looked at them, all the questions have been addressed, and then the town manager signs off, she's the final sign-off. So from a zoning standpoint, I've signed off on these and the. Umbrella that these are, they're a private event, some of them, Dream Ride, you can go to, but you're still paying an entrance fee. So if Dream Ride is choosing to provide food using food trucks. They should be allowed, it it's an event, it is a one-time event. John Smith is not driving to Dream Ride to just go get his lunch for the day. And then he's, if he's eating there, he's going because he's part of Dream Ride and he's participating in the Dream Ride events. Same thing, um, Heinz Farm will have a food truck every so often depending upon the nature of the event. But you're not going there just to go get your coffee and your breakfast, you're doing that because you're choosing, you're choosing to participate in that event. Um, no different than if it was a private party, so somebody with graduation parties and. Um, birthday parties have food trucks, we don't regulate that, they don't need a private event permit or an event permit either. And corporate events, so there are corporate events that come through and sometimes those will have event permits or tent permits, so that'll come through. So Trump, for instance, having a corporate event and wants food trucks in for their employees, they don't need. They're welcome to have, I can't, me now just going onto Trump property. me now just going onto Trump property, oh hey, I want to have lunch with you all today, you know, you don't do, right, you can't do that, that's a special event for, for Trump. So it's a separate, this is for public access, so this is now, we're changing this to say, this is for public access, somebody can set up as a retail restaurant to sell to anyone coming and going and passing by at any particular time, it isn't associated with a particular event. So we've viewed it as a distinctly different type of service that's being provided.
So Shannon, the soccer tournaments and stuff like that, that's a private event? Or that's an event and it doesn't fall under this, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Your question?
Yes. Well, I guess, I mean, the, the bigger, more, and public, I get, I get the private ones, but I just, I, I think I'm a little, little still, I still have issues with the ones that are open to public. And they're public.
We've had them, at Tungus, like the Tungus Carnival has them, right, so we're either allowing them or we're not for the, for those type of, of events, and I can't say, yes, you can have them at Dream Ride, but you can't have them over here, so those, food is being provided at those events. And in some way, it's some mobile type of food service. Now, you, you would not functionally be able to hold those events without having some type of food service at those. So. That's what we've done.
Okay. Understood.
I understand that it's not necessarily agreed to universally, so this also will, the language in here addresses that, so obviously if the commission doesn't agree and does not agree with how this has been handled, that's fine, and that wording can get changed. But then, we've got to decide on what we're doing. So you don't have to agree with the wording, you don't have to agree with how I've been addressing these, and that's fine. But these events do take place, and if it's gonna change, then, then there needs to be a consensus as to how that's being addressed moving ahead.
Any other questions, commissioners? Are you all set?
All set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Go to written comment if I can.
Sure, you want to do that for sure, absolutely.
So, since I seem to be forgetting a few things this evening.
We all are, Shannon.
So this is part of a text amendment, any text amendment that is, has the potential to impact a neighboring property due to, from a zone standpoint, if this hits some of our north and south town property lines, if you will, so this went to Krog for review. Krog got back to us, their comment, "The staff of the Regional Planning Commission of the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed the zoning referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns." And notes when the public hearing's been scheduled, so, and this is sent then to all of our neighboring municipalities. From our Economic Development Commission, I went before them on February 12th, the letter, Mr. Chair, I can read this in the record, word for word, depending on what the preference is. It was shared with everyone in advance and it was posted on the website, so if you're good, I'll just do a synopsis, basically, it's, it is in support of the regulation and support in allowing mobile food vendors. And as Garrett noted, their respectfully recommended, "Consider eliminating the requirement that a mobile food vendor provide a portable restroom to customer, if customer seating is required, and the thought that it could place an undue burden on the operators and act as a barrier to participation." That many food truck models operate without this requirement. That was the only comment that they had on the regulation, other than that, it was a very, seemed to be very well-received when I met with them a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Dunn is a former, also issued an email, correspondence, Mr. Dunn, this was posted on the website. So this has been shared with the public, it's been shared with the commission. He's a former member and chair of TPZ. He, as we had discussed when I brought this up with you folks, obviously, this has been something that's been a longstanding, that food trucks were not permitted in Farmington, obviously, he notes, he thinks it's uniquely a bad idea to permit them now. He's troubled by the carve-out that's mentioned for a public event permit issued by the town manager, so I believe I've explained my thoughts and how I have addressed this going forward. One item that's missing is the health department licensing, it really wasn't, we're not responsible for it, they have to do that anyhow. But as Garrett noted, we'll go ahead and make that a line item for verification. Certainly, we're not undercutting a restaurant, the restaurants require food, our health permit, health district permits, and so do food trucks. Food trucks, because they are transient, there is reciprocal permitting from health district to health district. So obviously, a restaurant wouldn't have that because they're not transient, unless they happen to do both and have a food truck as part of their restaurant, so. But that obligation is still there, they are not alleviated of that obligation. He's impressed with the depth and thought that went into the proposal. Begs exceedingly difficult, he found, found that some of the dimensional requirements may be difficult and begs the question as to why to even do this to begin, but again, as we had noted, we thought it best to limit it to a small, confined, manageable area, let's test the water, see how it goes, and if it's going well, then with the commission and staffs working together, we can decide whether or not this is something that should be expanded, so. That was all the written correspondence that we received regarding this.
Thanks, Shannon.
You're welcome.
So this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for an opposition, come on up to the podium.
My name's Eric Stagel, I live at eighteen Village View Lane in Unionville. I'm the owner and operator of Craftbird Food Truck, pretty much, yeah, this is all happening because I wanted to open where I could not open, and thank you Garrett and Shannon for, you know, all the work you guys did. I have been in business for about nine years. I've had my Farmington Valley yearly health permit, the, the whole nine years I've been operating. I also have West Hartford and Bloomfield, East Hartford, and like Shannon mentioned, just recently, the health department, they started doing reciprocal, so luckily, I'm based out of East Hartford, Farmington opted in, so, so like I said, I've been yearly permit for those, those towns, and winter can be very rough in the food truck business. So I had this grand idea to park at my friend Evan's coffee shop for January, February, March. Put it on my social media, which I have a large following, and of course, Shannon saw it and was like, you are not opening, and I was like, so, so we're here. I've, I've done all my stuff, I've got my peddler's permits, I got my health permits. I mean, I've been in business for nine years, we do pretty well in the summertime, but once again, we're, you know, winter can be rough. So the idea was to just do, you know, January, February, and March, but since we're going through this process and I live in Farmington, I love, you know, Farmington Valley. My plan is, as long as this goes through, is to do all year round. You know, a few days a week, obviously, I can't be there every day because I only have one food truck, and it is on the road a lot, so I'm all for this, and I hope you guys are too.
Thank you so much, thank you. Want to go online, it's all the people in the room, Shannon, so.
It's in the room, okay, so if anyone's called in to offer comment on the food truck regulation, please raise your hand, be using the feature in Zoom. Yeah, there's no one else online, it's just us online, so I'm gonna say no, there's no hands raised.
Okay.
We've, yeah, that's it.
All right, so any discussion?
I just had a, a point, really.
Okay.
The carve-out, it's really, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, right? Special events, it's all about the permanence of the application, right? They're gonna be there for a short period of time, they're gonna leave, this is gonna be here for, you know, at least a year, right? On and off, but it's gonna be there, so I don't think it's fair to say it's applying different standards, it's different applications, so that's just my two cents on that.
Anybody else's thoughts?
No, I, I, I agree, I think, you know, the events is, is, it, it, it's a one-time thing. You know, it's there for a day or, or a weekend or whatever, and this is, you know, January, February, March. I do agree with the EDC on taking out the port-alet. I think that's gonna be an undue burden, number one, and I, I just see too much vandalism potential on it.
Yep.
So I would like to see that removed, and other than that, let's go forward.
Absolutely, that port-alet has to, yeah, we have to dump it.
You wanted to say port-alet again, that's what I was saying.
Portable, portable toilet. Yeah, I, I, I agree with, with Commissioner Cantor, I think that's useless, and it's gonna put lot, lots of burden, burden on, on the owner of the business, and other than that, very excited, we're gonna have something new in Farmington.
It's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I think it's a win for everybody.
Bruce?
I, I'm there too, I think we can forego the port-alet requirement as well, and I'm very supportive of these businesses, that'd be great, it's a good thing for Farmington, and the timing is right to go ahead with it, so hundred percent there.
Yeah, I agree with everything said, that, out with the port-alets, right? And I think the time is right, I think food trucks have become a major part of dining these days, and so it's time to sort of catch up with that, so I'm in agreement with what everybody else said too, so I guess, gonna look at Matt again.
That's just, be okay with eight PM across the board, seven days a week?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, I do, I need to close the public hearing before we make a motion, right? So I hear about close the public hearing, do we need to include the no port-alet in the motion? Right?
You can, we have that noted in the
Oh, okay.
As presented.
It says consider.
Just as presented, then, okay, just wanted to check. Okay. Take it away, Matt.
Sure. Like to make a motion to approve the application for text amendment by Town Plan and Zoning Commission to the zoning regulations, Article Two, Section Fourteen, C1 Zone to Permit Mobile Food Vendors as Presented.
Second.
Everybody comfortable with what we're voting on?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes, food trucks in Farmington.
Yeah. Definitely, we're almost there, bud.
One more step.
All right.
All right, planners report?
Yes, sir.
Oh. No, we're done with that one, yes, of course you can.
How did you find out about the, do we have investigators?
It was on Unionville Talks.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Sometimes we, you'd be amazed at what people will tell us and insist that we investigate, so I'll leave it at that.
I'm not surprised.
This one I happened to stumble across myself right in the holiday time, so
Oh, okay.
I felt bad, but my alternative was not saying anything and then having a bigger issue in January, so I had to make that phone call about a week before Christmas.
Oh, nice.
Neither of us were happy. I'll see, but we've, we've, we've come a long way, both of us on this, so that's been good. Sign, so I'm gonna move on to planners' report, Two Bridgewater sign replacement, these are friends at Two Bridgewater, they must be, they've gone through a re-tenanting mix and whatnot of people there, but I pushed this back to them, I said, can you just give me like the whole summation of this so that we have it? So they've measured the, the northeast elevation is a hundred linear feet, that's roughly twenty-five feet per tenant. When you go corner to corner, it's well over a hundred feet, the building's got some funny jogs as it faces the intersection. Recently, we've approved three signs, roughly twenty to twenty-one square feet, so sixty-one square feet total. So this is just another replacement sign coming up. So it, it talks about the unit frontage is twenty-five linear feet, they're proposing sixteen square feet for their sign, so they're within their allocation for individual signs, so this is what it's gonna look like, they're all the same type of lettering. It's all the white pin letters coming into the, into the brick face, so the nothing outlandish where it's nice and consistent, they're each the individual logos, which I think is fine, but it's, it's a consistent look. And then on the door, when you come around to the back parking area, then entering, so you've got the door that comes in and you've got some identifiers then for the door, to understand who's in the building, so. So if you agree, I'm gonna let this go to building permit unless there's a concern with anything.
Sounds good, Shannon.
That's all I've got for you this evening from planners' report, unless anybody's got questions for me and something.
Questions for Shannon?
Topic of the day. My CSI investigating skills. Yeah, like I said, we'll be, you'd be surprised what floats our way. I could tell you pretty much every neighborhood that hasn't cleared a sidewalk, and
Yeah.
Garrett and Bruce certainly can, so.
Any questions for Shannon, anybody? Good? All right, can we get a?
Done checking out the unshovelled sidewalks?
I can't wait for this, it's a, everything's gonna melt.
I've got neighbors to help with that, so.
So. That's it.
Okay, motion, and second for the improvement, meeting minutes, please?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes for February tenth, twenty twenty-five Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? I, opposed, abstentions, motion passes, meeting adjourned.